This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you very much.
So, what is up?
If you go back, is there a motion to come back in open session? Motion by Commissioner Brush. When you second. Second by Commissioner Hill. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero. Commissioner Vila. Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranos.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes, okay. Go back, Mr. Hamil.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. It's not my privilege also to recognize people here at Detention. Gilbert was recently promoted to under sheriff. I'll let Sheriff want to speak to that. And but what I can speak to about Gilbert is an active member of the DWI Planning Council, organizer of the torch run. And he's an awardee of MAT. He was very, he's been very active in the MAT organization as well. And I would like to thank Mr. Attencio for your service to Taos County. Appreciate everything you've done and your active participation in the DWI Planning Council, MAT, and all the organizations. And that was a shining light to the sheriff's office. I want to thank you for that as well. So with that said, I'm going to turn this presentation over to Sheriff.
County Manager Hamil, thank you very much. Commissioners, good morning. So just a real brief introduction into Gilbert Attentio. He came to us when the vision called for him. He came to communities where he had no ties or no relations or anything whatsoever. With that said, he committed his entire law enforcement career to this community, where he actually made a difference. He touched the lives of many, many people. Most importantly, victims of DUI crashes. He was very, very active with the DUI enforcement in the area to the point where he was able to get the Taos County Sheriff's Office recognized not only once but twice as agency, Rural Agency of the Year with MAT. He was also recognized as Officer of the Year with MAT. You know, it's rather impressive when you know, and you know that you've made a difference when people are trying to call on the weekend to find out if, hey, has Attentio worked? You know he's made an impact when people are afraid or wanting to know if he's working because that's how they guide or what they're going to do with their decisions then. That makes an impact. That keeps us all safe. Speaking to Special Olympics. Under Sheriff Attentio was instrumental in getting the torch assigned to the Taos County Sheriff's Office, which is a huge honor when it comes to Special Olympics. He was very, very active with that organization and made a very, very huge impact with those athletes. Every year when we do our torch run, it's very evident that they care for him passionately because they all run up to him and hug him. You know, and they think, everybody's got to have a hero. He's theirs. And in a sense, he's become ours, just in that respect. So with that said, under Sheriff Attentio, with his retirement, is going to leave a big hole. There's going to be a big vacuum within the sheriff's office, within the county, within the community of Taos. And whoever steps up to fill those shoes has got some pretty big shoes to go. But however, it's time for Under Sheriff Attentio to move on to a new chapter in his life, and he can rest easy knowing that he made a difference. He mattered. He mattered to the people of Taos County. He mattered to everybody that he came into contact with, to everybody whose lives he had. So with that said, Under Sheriff Attentio, thank you for your service.
Certificate of recognition, certificates awarded to Gilbert Attentio. Thank you for the 20 years you have given Taos County Sheriff's Department. Your tireless work ethic professionalism has set the tone for the rest of the department with pride, respect, and love. You will always have a home here. We wish you the best of luck in all your future endeavors. Signed, Steve Gueda, Sheriff, FR Bob Romero, Chair and County Manager Brent Tunnell. Thank you, Gilbert.
Thank you, everybody. It was my honor to serve Taos County. It was my honor to finish off. To me. And my friends for life. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Attentio, for your service. And I want to thank all the honorees this morning for their service at Taos County.
Next, Mr. Chair, it's my privilege to recognize Michael Danny Garcia, Testa, from Test County Detention Center Director. Danny, come forward. There's a lot that could be said about Danny. He's come in during a rough spot. And Danny's originally from the Penasco Valley, and so Taos County is also home to as well. So he had worked with the state in Mexico beginning his career with the state police event. He'd gone to CYFD, then from CYFD, came to Taos County, wanted to come back home. Spent many years of his father's life with his father. And I know that Danny really liked spending that time with his father before he passed. And Danny also had a big impact on our detention center, on our officers. And he wanted to build a team, build the camaraderie between officers and, you know, solid unit. And I feel like he's done that over the course of Taos County. And now life is calling them back home to Albuquerque and for that next chapter in his life. And I would like to thank Danny for all his service to the county. And I know visiting with Antonia a couple of weeks ago, she was heartfelt that another director is leaving. The bonds that's growing in the office, growing with the detention staff has been tremendous. So I want to thank you for that, Danny. And so I have this certificate of recognition, certificate is awarded to Michael Danny Garcia. Thank you for years you've given to Taos County Detention Center. Your tireless work ethic and professionalism set the tone for the rest of the department with pride, respect, and love. You'll always have a home here. We wish you the best of luck in all your future endeavors. Signed, FR Bob Romero and Brent Tunnell, County Manager. Thank you, Danny.
Well, I wasn't going to get emotional, but Brett made me very emotional there. And I'm going to miss everybody here, all your support, Commissioners to Brent, to Jason, my team. I mean, we worked on everything that we said we were going to, you know, we have no interim positions. All our supervisors are full-time supervisors. We only have one vacant sergeant position because she left the state police. We only have five current vacancies at the jail, which is the lowest number since I've been here. And we currently have a couple more in the works to come on. Just signed two letters yesterday, and we have a couple more interviews this week. So the jails, we moved in the right direction with the help of all of you. We got it upgraded to probably one of the most upgraded facilities in the state. And we're still implementing a lot of programs to help keep the community safe when they're within our walls. So I just want to thank you guys and thank you for giving me the opportunity to, you know, hopefully make the jail a better place for everybody, you know, staff and detainees. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Daniel. Congratulations on your retirement. Okay, we'll move on for public comment. This is an opportunity. Oh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. I missed item seven E. This is a proclamation. Commissioner Brush, would you please introduce that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure if these are, is this working? A little bit. I'll speak loudly. Item seventy is a proclamation celebrating annual LGBTQ plus pride celebration in Taos. And I'm just going to go ahead and read the proclamation that Taos County will be presenting at the event. Whereas everyone has a right to live without fear or prejudice, discrimination, violence, or hatred based on gender identity or expression or sexual orientation, it is important that everyone acknowledge and support diversity in their community, especially those communities that are most vulnerable. And whereas August fourteenth to the seventeenth is lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus LGBTQ plus pride in Taos, which brings together LGBTQ plus people and their allies to form a tangible community of support and acceptance in Taos and the surrounding local areas and to create and enhance visibility and support of diversity in our community. And whereas it is desirable to celebrate, educate, and engage the community on the issues, contributions, culture, and unique voice of LGBTQ plus people and the impact LGBTQ plus people have on local and global communities. And whereas according to Mental Health in Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Youth published by the U.S. National Library of Medicine, visible LGBTQ plus sexuality-related social support from parents, friends, and during adolescence, each uniquely contributed to positive well-being in young adulthood, now therefore be proclaimed on the sixth day of August 2024 by the Taos County Board of Commissions. That August fourteenth to the seventeenth is the annual pride celebration in Taos, and we urge our residents to respect and honor the diverse Taos community and celebrate and build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance. Signed, FR Bob Romero, Chair, Commissioner District One. Miguel Romero, Commissioner District Two. Darlene Villa, Commissioner District Three. Ronald Mascheranos, Commissioner District Five. And Jeanette Brush, Commissioner District Four. Encourage everyone to join in the events. And if you're wondering why Taos Pride, for some people might be aware that Pride usually happens in June around the world. Taos Pride, the way I've been told, happens in August so that all of our friends from as far away as Denver, Albuquerque, Santa Fe can come and join us, and they sure do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brush. We move now to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to speak for three minutes on any topic that they want to bring before the Commission. So I'll see in the back, Neil, would you like to speak? Come forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. I'm Neil Philkey from Yano San Juan. I'm retired. I'm eighty-one, and I hope, I'm pretty much, we're pretty much living on our Social Security, and I hope it lasts until I don't anymore. But perhaps we're asking the wrong questions during this election year. Our senators and congressmen do not pay into Social Security. Many years ago, they voted in their own benefit plan. In more recent years, no congressperson has felt the need to change it. For all practical purposes, their plan works like this. When they retire, they continue to draw the same pay until they die. Except it may increase from time to time for cost of living adjustments. Their cost for this excellent plan is zero. These little perks they voted themselves is free to them. You and I pick up the tab for this plan. The funds for this fine retirement plan come directly from the general fund, our tax dollars at work. From our own Social Security plan, which you and I pay or have paid into every payday until we retire, which amount is matched by our employer, we can expect to get an average of a thousand a month after retirement. Social Security could be very good if only one small change were made. And that change would be to jerk the Golden Fleece Retirement Plan from under the senators and congressmen. Put them into the Social Security Plan with the rest of us, and then watch how fast they would fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, seeing no one else, we'll move on. Next is for the minutes. Approval of July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting minutes. Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Brush, second by. Second by Commissioner Mascheranos. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Romero. Commissioner Vila. Commissioner Brush.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranos.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes.
And now we move to item eleven, Resolutions and Ordances.
Or no, this is ten, back up a little bit, ten to presentations. We have a presentation from Taos County Cooperative Weed Management, Robert Corney.
Good, good morning, commissioners. Thank you very much, and I'd like to say a special good morning to Commissioner Vehil, who is the representative to our, our committee. So there's just a couple things. My name is Bob Corney. I'm the chairman of the Taos Cooperative Weed Management Area and our mission has been to educate the public about the invasive weeds that are all over the place. I'm also co-president of the Taos Native Plant Society and that's an important connection as we try to battle these weeds. We also have to think about what we're going to do in their place. So there's just two things I want to talk about today in my presentation. First of all, I just want you to be aware of a couple important projects we're working on. If you look at your screen on the right, we have two major projects going on in the county. This is a Scotch thistle remediation project on the S M U property near Pot Creek. It's a thirty-acre site and we're busy getting rid of all the Scotch thistle out there. The second thing is in town at the, Tanya is going to change the screen, in Cornelia Basin, which you might be interested, we just received a hundred and sixty thousand dollar B I L grant to work on that piece of land. It's a, it's a beautiful historic property right next to the Taos Land Trust, Fred Baca Park and a bunch of wetlands. And we're going to try to turn that into a, a new kind of park that's, and I'm not, I'm not imagining pickleball and tennis, but I'm imagining a place where we're developing native plants and restoring it to native grasses. Two things I came to talk to you about, one has been resolved and the other one hasn't. One of the things we've, that's been really holding us back, we're mostly a bunch of citizen volunteers and we haven't had a staff person to, to help us along. Well, I'm, at this point, let me introduce Tanya Duncan, who's the assistant manager of the Taos Soil and Water Conservation District and Fritz Han, who's a former town counselor. Anyway, Tanya and her group is recently budgeted for a full-time staff member who will concentrate on invasive weeds and, and plant health. And so it's the first time we're going to be able to, to get some real staff help. Now, you've probably heard of us talk about in the past, well, maybe the county could help us staff this position. The good news is we're not asking you that. We, we think, you know, we've got that covered. But I'm here to ask you another important thing. One of the things that really frustrates us about invasive weeds in Taos is that when construction happens in this town, whether it's governmental or it's private, people come and build stuff and then they leave behind this disturbed land. And as you guys, any of you guys know, who's involved with agriculture is disturbed land invites invasive grasses, you know, thistles, hoary cress, myrtle spruce, all that kinds of crap, stuff that's, that's showing up. And that happens because developers, whether it's again governmental or private, they have no reason or no incentive when they finish a project to just simply re-vegetate it. And it's not asking a lot, it's not a burden. And so we're going to ask you guys to join with the Town of Taos and we're going to ask you to put it on an agenda soon for a joint meeting to talk about, maybe thinking about an ordinance that would require contractors, again, whether they be governmental or private, they build a project in Taos, they can't just leave a bunch of dirt behind on the edges for invasive plants to grow. Now, all of you guys know, if you're agricultural people or you've lived here long enough, you know what happens when you disturb land around here and you don't do anything, boom, it's suddenly it's full of thistles and it interferes with agriculture. It interferes with all kinds of things. So this is our one request today, that you guys take us seriously and start talking about the need for this ordinance. And I'm talking about ordinances, by the way. I, I want to assure you, we're not talking about trying to make private landowners do stuff. And I mean, there are people who have land in town that's already full of invasives. We feel we can deal with that through education. And we're not asking you to consider burdening our citizens with an ordinance of that. But we think that's very reasonable for you to require builders, again, whether they're governmental or private, if they come and build something, they've got to not just leave a bunch of disturbed land around the project. We don't think that's, that's unreasonable. So those are our, our two requests and I wanted to make a brief presentation and also I want to thank the big crowd here who's, who's come to support me in my, my proposal. Any questions from the commissioners?
Mr. Veal.
Yes, so, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to thank you Bob for your leadership and the organization. You know, commissioners, you all know this, I've been a commissioner, I've been on this board and every year I ask if I can please remain. I, I really enjoy being on this board, really doing good work. Just great, you should, great collaboration between the Town of County and School of Taos and Water Conservation. We certainly have a former council member on it, very instrumental in, in making sure we're something of a bond. So, you know, I have to tell you that when I tell folks I'm going to a meeting, I'm saying I'm going to a meeting, and they're kind of very interested because they're like, weed meeting? I have to put the word in my head for it, otherwise they think I'm going to another kind of meeting. But thank you for your leadership and so I move forward to county, county.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we move next on the agenda. After ten, we have eleven resolutions and ordinances. And first is discussion and consideration decision regarding the approval of resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-five, a resolution authorizing requesting participation and funding in New Mexico Department Transportation, F Y twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Local Government Road Fund Program, Control H W twenty-one point five zero zero five six nine Funding Cooperative Agreement, Mr. Joe Fernandez, Public Works Director.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. These are the three newest L G R funds that we've got available for Blueberry. Blueberry Hill Road is definitely needed as much as we can get. These are the three newest. And right now, as far as the first that we have available, which is the twenty-four thirty-five, bear with me just a little bit, I can give you a total amount of what we've got, which is the hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred and fifteen. That will be, like I said, going directly to the Blueberry Hill project. I stand for any questions.
Any question for? So we have motion for that one.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-five, authorizing requesting participation and funding in the N M D O T Fiscal Year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Local Government Road Fund Program as presented by Director Fernandez.
We have motion by Commissioner Brush.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Vehil. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero. Commissioner Vehil. Yes. Commissioner Brush. Yes. Vice Chair Mascareños.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. And we move to V, you go ahead, Mr. Fernandez.
Okay, the next one that is coming along, that particular L G R F fund, which is the twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six, that was in total of a hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. That is the second of the third.
Any questions on that one? If not, is there a motion? Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Romero.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mascareños. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero. Commissioner Vehil. Yes. Commissioner Brush. Yes. Vice Chair Mascareños.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. And we move now to C.
All right, the last one of the day. This, the last one is twenty twenty-four dash thirty-seven of the L G R F funds. This one is totaling a hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars, also attached to Blueberry.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Vehil. Second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero. Commissioner Vehil. Yes. Commissioner Brush. Yes. Vice Chair Mascareños.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
We'll move to D V. And this is discussion and consideration, the decision regarding the approval of resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the publication of the title General Summary and Time Date and Meeting Place for Discussion, Consideration, and Action Upon Proposed Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash five, an ordinance repealing Taos County Ordinance nineteen ninety-six dash ten and Ordinance nineteen ninety-eight dash three, and adopting the New Mexico Administrative Code as adopted by the Construction Industries Division of the New Mexico Licensing and Regulation Department, which has adopted the twenty twenty-one International Building Code. Ms. Rachel Romero.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners, Mr. Haddamio, Mr. Chigio. Thank you for your time today. I present this resolution for consideration.
Is that better?
I stand before you today requesting the approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight, requesting date and time for hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash five. This is so that way we can adopt the two thousand twenty-one International Building Codes, which have already been adopted by the state of New Mexico. I would like to request a date of September seventeenth at the regular commission meeting. And I stand for any questions.
Any questions for the director? This is seventeenth.
No, Mr. Chair, I, I move approval of resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight, authorizing and directing the publication of the title General Summary and the time date and meeting place of September seventeenth, nine AM, nine AM right here, for discussion, consideration, and action upon proposed ordinance twenty twenty-four dash five, repealing nineteen ninety-six dash ten and nineteen ninety-eight dash three, to adopt the New Mexico Administrative Code as adopted by the Construction Industries Division of the New Mexico Licensing and Regulation Department, which has adopted the twenty twenty-one International Building Codes.
We have motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Brush and second by Commissioner Mascareños to approve the resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-eight. Any further questions, discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, can you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil. Yes. Commissioner Brush. Yes. Vice Chair Mascareños.
Yes.
Chair Romero.
Yes. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, and I apologize for the mouthful of language.
That's stated.
Next we have E. And this is discussion, consideration, decision in the approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty, a resolution declaring the intent of the Board of County Commissioners of Taos County, New Mexico, to consider for adoption, an ordinance authorizing issuance and sale of up to twenty million dollars of county of Taos, County of Taos, Mexico Hospital Gross Receipts Tax Improvement Revenue Bonds, Series twenty twenty-four, in one or more series for the purpose of providing funds for designing, constructing, and equipping hospital buildings, remodeling, renovating, or making additions, and equipping existing hospital buildings or improving or equipping of the grounds of the hospital buildings, directing county manager and county clerk to publish notice, consider an ordinance authorizing such bonds in the newspaper of general circulation within the county. Mr. Haddamio.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. With me is Chris Muirhead from Modron Spurling is our bond counsel. Before we get, before turning this over to Mr. Muirhead, both Mr. Muirhead and Eric Harrigan from R B C Capital and myself, we've been having conversations regarding the sale of the bonds on Friday. We did meet with CEO James Kaiser, their CFO Connie Pruitt, and both the treasurer and the finance director and the deputy finance director, we were all present. We had a meeting with Mr. Muirhead and Mr. Harrigan regarding the sale of the bonds. And I'll let, turn it over at this point to Mr. Muirhead, but I wanted to let you know that the hospital has been in the loop and we have had at least two discussions with Mr. Muirhead and Mr. Harrigan with the hospital. With that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Chris Muirhead with Modron Firm. Nice to see you all again. I just wanted, just thought this is a good opportunity to just kind of recap what this statute does and what this tax does so that we all are operating in the same direction as we move forward. This is the hospital, the half percent hospital gross receipts tax that replaced the education gross receipts tax that had been in place for about twenty years and provided funding for capital projects for all the various school districts and charter schools within Taos County. The legislature changed that, that statute still in effect, but added this statute, which provides for a half percent county gross receipts tax. It is, the county has replaced the county education gross receipts tax with this county hospital gross receipts tax to provide revenues for, twenty-five percent of the revenues go to a nursing program within the county operated by probably U N M Taos or some other entity. Seventy-five percent of the revenues go to pay bonds, similar to how the education gross receipts tax is structured, that provide the source of capital for the hospital to purchase equipment and other capital improvements. It has to go to capital improvements at the hospital, not operations or keeping the hospital running, but for capital improvements. And as Mr. Harmio said, we had a meeting and they have a long list of things that they have itemized over the next five years. What this resolution does, excuse me, is just the first step to get in the paper, a notice of meeting that we move forward with an ordinance. And that ordinance really is what's going to govern the size of the bond issuance and how that plays out, whether it goes to the New Mexico Finance Authority or the capital markets. Mr. Harrigan, who is the financial advisor to the county, has run numbers based on preliminary estimates of what the tax will produce and has targeted conservatively in talking with Mr. Harmio in the county and the finance department with the county, about twenty to twenty-two point five million in bond proceeds. That will be the, about twenty million to the county, or excuse me, to the hospital for these capital projects. The county will be working in partnership with the hospital as the issuer of the bonds and ultimately the approval of the projects for the, for the hospital. Would request one meeting amendment, when the, we provided the resolution to Brent last week, we had estimated twenty million in talking to Mr. Harrigan at the end of the week or this weekend, he said, can we bump it to twenty-two five just for a little extra security? This doesn't, this resolution is not setting the, the par amount of the bonds. This is just providing notice to interested members of the community that we're looking at something not to exceed twenty-two five, but there'll be ample discussion about how that number is reached, what the projects are going to be by the hospital and what the process is going to be moving forward to issue the bonds. So I would request an amendment to it to bring it to twenty-two five over the twenty million as published in the, the agenda. Happy to answer any questions. Again, this is just the, the first process, the first step, but thought it'd be a good idea to kind of recap how we got here and what the, what the tax does.
Any questions for?
If there are no question, I would just like to add that the Colacross Hospital is a county-owned facility, but operated by Taos Health Systems, managed and operated by Taos Health Systems. And so that's why the relationship exists between the county and the hospital.
Great, and that, and this, certainly you are in control of the proceeds and how it goes. And so this, moving forward, that partnership definitely will continue.
I have no questions, I'm ready to make a motion unless there's a question. Seeing that this puts things into motion, I make, I'm sorry, seeing that this moves things forward, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty, a resolution declaring the intent of Board of County Commissioners of Taos, Taos County, New Mexico, to consider for adoption ordinance authorizing issuance and sale up to twenty million, County of Taos. Okay, I'm reading off of the twenty-two five.
Twenty-two five, thank you.
Okay. Twenty-two five, twenty-two million, five hundred thousand, County of Taos, New Mexico Hospital G R T, Tax Improvement Revenue Bonds, Series twenty twenty-four. I will leave it at that.
I'll second that.
We have a motion with Commissioner Vehil, second by Commissioner Mascareños. Further discussion? Further discussion, questions? If not, Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I'm asking that the Commission consider making an amendment to the agenda. In the audience, we do have our OEM Director and his staff, Mr. Mark Ortega, the OEM Coordinator, he's worked on producing three memorandum of understandings with the school district and Assistant Superintendent Renata Buncher-Gonz here, asked that maybe we consider amending the agenda to hear the MOUs. That way, these folks can go back to work. So. It is 15 C and D and 13.
15 C and D?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to that? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that we amend the agenda to now hear items 13 C and D.
13 C and D? Okay. So we have a motion to move items on the agenda, 13 C and D.
Second.
And there's a motion by Commissioner Brush, second by Commissioner Vehil. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. We are here today to discuss and try to get approval of the MOU. The first one is the Questa Independence Schools and the Taos Municipal Schools. In the past, we did not have these MOUs in place when we have a disaster that occurs for sheltering necessities. So Mark has taken on this task to move forward with trying to get these approved, so we can have them established in the event of any emergencies and be better prepared for our community in providing the services. You know, there was not very much to go into the MOU in itself, but it really goes over just having the shelter in place and us providing the services to assist with cleaning up and making sure that the facilities are taken care of. And I'll stand for any questions, if there are any.
Commissioner Brush is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Ortega, for being here this morning. Just a quick question, do we already have other MOUs in place, like with, in the areas of, say, the Ski Valley or Penasco? Just wondering if these two are joining any other agreements that you already have in place.
Madam Commissioner Brush, these will be the first two. We do have two others that are pending right now with Mesa Vista as well as Penasco. We will definitely be moving forward with the other jurisdictions to make sure that these MOUs are in place. We are working on some exercises to kind of give them the understanding and more knowledge of why these are important to have in place, and they will be incorporated into our emergency operations plan as well. So we're hoping that with the approval of these, that we can move forward with the rest. We have already have some presentations with municipal schools and with Questa, and they both have approved them as well, so that's why we wanted to put them on the agenda for today.
Great, thank you.
No further questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. As presented.
Motion by Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Item 13C? Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And go through to D. This is discussion, consideration, discussion regarding the approval of a memorandum of understanding between Taos County and Taos Municipal School District for the use of Taos School locations as evacuation centers during an emergency. Mr. Russo.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. This is the same verbiage as the previous one for Questa. The locations that we're looking at for these ones would be of middle school and the high school in the event of an emergency, but other than that, everything stays the same as far as the verbiage.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the memorandum of understanding between Taos County and Taos Municipal School District.
We have motion by Commissioner Brush?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Vehil. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
And yes. And thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners, we appreciate it. Thank you. Move back to. Back to item 12, Public Hearing A, this is a continuation of a public hearing from July 16, 2024, Regular Commission Meeting, to review and make decisions on the planned unit development overlays own application and the type two preliminary class subdivision application for the proposed Tarleton Ranch Eco Villas Development Project per Section 5.3.2, to review and approve procedure for new zoning subsection C, subsection G of Taos County's Land Use Regulations, the Commission must approve the proposed planned unit development overlay zone ordinance 2024-2. Per Section 4.8.8, hearing before the Board of County Commissioners of Taos County Subdivision Regulations, the Commission must also approve the proposed type two preliminary class subdivision application. Mr. Trillo, County Attorney.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So this should look familiar. This is the third time that this matter comes before you, previous to your seeing it, there were three hearings before the planning commission. At the last hearing, which was held on July 16th, the Commission voted to allow, to defer this matter until this date, to allow Taos Pueblo to make comments on the application of the Tarleton Ranch, both for the PUD and for the subdivision, in writing by August 1st, which was several days, several days ago, in anticipation of this meeting, so that you'd have them ahead of time. So you, those should be in your packet in terms of, of the letter. Just a little bit of history, what happened was, rather than making a substantive response, the Pueblo asked to meet with staff. Even though this isn't what the Commission had directed, staff did meet with them in order to explain what was in the record. At that meeting, they were informed by the Pueblo that the Pueblo thought that they were entitled to a special status under the Subdivision Act, which allowed them to comment as a public agency. That request was then made in writing as required by the statute. Statute says that on an annual basis, the, anybody who, any, Pueblo who thinks that they should be a commenting agency, similar to, say, the State Engineer or Soil and Water District on any subdivision, has to, at least on an annual basis, submit in writing to the county a request to be considered a public agency, and that that letter has to be made by certified mail. So there are a few requests. Subsequent to the meeting, rather than submitting a substantive response, commenting on the applications, saying whether for it or against it, about the PUD and the subdivision, they submitted the letter via certified mail, saying that they should be a comment, commenting agency under the statute. So unfortunately, the Pueblo did not avail itself of the opportunity to comment on the, on these actions, but rather made a technical argument, saying that they should be a public agency, therefore, the whole process should in essence start over again. Tarleton, through its representative, its attorney, submitted a letter just last evening that you now have, and is going to be made part of the record, responding to this technical argument. It's important to understand this, these are, that the Pueblo did not make a substantive claim, did not make a substantive comment to the application, but instead made a technical request, and Tarleton responded to that technical request through its own letter. So there's where we are. If you, your options now are to consider the matter through a motion, or you can ask anything of staff, I think that would be appropriate. The floor is closed, however, for further testimony and evidence. You could make a motion to open that up again, that's another option. And the third option, which I think was anticipated by staff, was that you make a motion to enter into the executive session. It's, it's not, I wouldn't say it was a mistake, but that was actually at the end of your agenda. It says that we may enter to executive session. I think it's section 18. But you, I think it would be more appropriate to do that now, as opposed to let the whole agenda go through and then do it. So if you choose to go into executive session, there would need to be a motion. I would recommend that anybody making the motion refer to section 18 in doing that motion, and we'd go into executive session. I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Vehil to go into executive session. Is this, where it is on the agenda?
Well, no, but I think he just stated that we could move it, would we have to make a motion to move that?
Yeah, I think you did a.
Okay.
I might refer Commissioner Vehil to section 18.
Right, I did see that.
Maybe read that.
Okay.
Under section 18A. A motion to enter to closed session. It states the exemption number.
Right, okay. So are you, are you saying that since I made a motion to go into executive session, the appropriate would be to move that? Because you yourself said it should be.
Oh, no, we don't need to move it, I just say, I read that.
Oh, read it, I'm sorry. I am just, for some reason, I'm today. Okay, then I make a motion, 18A, which is discussion regarding the proposed Tarleton Ranch Eco Village, these matters may be also discussed in executive session under Open Meetings Act, exemption 10-15-1H3, which allows for deliberations for a public body in connection with an administrative, due to, due to cory proceeding. And so that is my motion. Commissioners?
Okay, and so for verification, the motion is?
To go into executive session.
To go into executive session, where it is on the agenda, or?
Right now.
Right now.
It makes more sense.
Is there a second to that motion? There's second, second by Commissioner Miguel Romero. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay. We'll be going into executive session this time, and we will return, thank you. And so we need a motion to come back into open session. Motion by Commissioner Romero. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Vehil to come back into public session. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And now, I believe we have a report from our attorney out of executive session.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, only those matters referenced in the motion to enter to closed session were discussed during closed session, and no final decisions were made.
Thank you, Mr. Trillo. Is there a motion to approve the attorney's report?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brush. Second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And so we're back on item 12, Public Hearing, continuation of the public hearing from July 16, 2024, Regular Commission Meeting, to review and make a decision on planned unit development overlay zone application. Commissioners, is there a motion on the matter before us?
I make a motion to approve based on the facts and findings of the staff.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mascherini, and a second by Commissioner Miguel. Is there discussion? Discussion? No discussion? Commissioner? No discussion? Okay. Is there any questions? If not, Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
No.
Commissioner Brush?
No.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
I would just say, preface, perhaps my, my vote, my, my sense it was a project that was too big in scope and size, as at this point in time, questions on requests for variances and compatibility, my vote is no.
Yes.
And we move forward on the agenda.
Mr. Chair. That motion failed, so we need another motion with regard to that request. If there's a motion for denial, somebody.
Mr. Chair.
The motion did not pass, is there another motion?
Mr. Chair, based on the number of variances and the incompatibility of the project, I move to deny the planned unit development. Is that sufficient?
Yes. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner.
And a second.
Brush, and second by Commissioner Vehil, to deny. And is there discussion on this motion? Questions, discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
No.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay, that motion. Okay, we move forward on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, now, there needs to be, there needs to be a vote on the subdivision request.
We do need to vote on second.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so open for motions on the, on the subdivision itself. Okay, Madam, Commissioner Brush.
Hold on.
We're going to get a motion. We're voting now, this is on the second part of it, approval or denial of the subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, the, the subdivision was based, the configuration of the subdivision was based on the PUD. So if you're going to vote for denial, you would, the basis for the denial is that the PUD was denied, therefore, the subdivision, the subdivision map is not possible. I'm not, I'm not very articulate, something along those lines. Because the PUD was denied, that's the basis for denying subdivision. Okay, so.
Then I will make the motion to deny the subdivision, based on the denial of the PUD.
Okay, very good. Motion by Commissioner Vehil to deny the subdivision, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Brush. Discussion on this? Or questions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner Vehil?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
No.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay, so that motion has also passed. Is there anything further on this issue? If not, we'll move on on the agenda, next item on the agenda. Next item is contracts, agreements, and MOUs. This is item 13A.
There it goes.
I didn't realize it had two minutes. Didn't realize.
It's okay, it's all kind of new to us.
Okay, we are on item A.
We're gonna wait until everyone gets. Where are we at?
Item, item A.
Okay, we'll continue. We're on item A, contracts, agreements, MOUs, and bids. Discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval for a warrant of RFP two thousand twenty four dash zero zero four for property tax and delinquent notice printing and mailing for Taos County, Elsa Vahill.
Good morning, Chair, Commission. Before you, I have a staff recommendation for RFP two thousand twenty four dash zero 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 four. And we received two responses to our published RFP for public tax bill and delinquent notice printing and mailing for the Taos County Treasurer's Office prior to the deadline, the two P M. Mounts standard time Friday, July twelfth, twenty twenty four. There were two officers, who, offers who responded were automated election services, DBA Inc. Impressions Incorporated, who we know as AES, and Masters Touch LLC. Based on the review conducted on this RFP, staff recommends awarding RFP two thousand twenty four dash Treasury report for printing and mailing for Taos County to automated election services, Impressions Incorporated, AES, respectively. Of course, this is also subject to a agreeable, mutual contract if this award is approved. I stand for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Vahill regarding A. If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Commissioner Vahill. Second by Commissioner Romero to approve. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner Vahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay, thank you. And move to B, which is discussion, consideration, decision regarding approval contract T C C two thousand twenty four dash twenty, Honeywell Building Solutions, a contract to provide inspections and maintenance on H V H C equipment and controls, fire, smoke, alarm inspections, testing, turn, furniture, install air filters and water treatment for the county complex. I guess Gilberto's not here, Elsa.
No, I'll, I'll be assisting Mr. Hadamion in regards to this contract. This contract in itself is a new contract that we need to enter in with Honeywell. And this is to actually maintain all our HVAC systems within these three buildings that we deal with every day. And of course, it involves inspections and maintenance. I'm not too sure. And I think Brent may have it. I'm not sure in terms of the dollar amount. I have not seen this one.
Now, to the contractor, which shall provide labor and materials to perform scope work as described in the contract, not to exceed one hundred and ninety four thousand, nine hundred and ninety four dollars and fifty four cents inclusive of New Mexico grocery receipts. In the past, I've had various different contracts with Honeywell for the maintenance of the HVAC system and other building components here at the complex.
That, that dollar amount actually encompasses a three-year contract. So you'll divide that one hundred and ninety one thousand within three years. So it is for a full three years, which will expire in twenty twenty seven. And we usually enter into a contract like that with procurement with them just to be have continuous service, especially if we have issues in the winter or the summer with the HVAC system, especially at the E D C site.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Brush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for that information also, because that was my question. Is this a multi-year? I think it's in there, but, and does this represent? I believe we've seen probably three years ago, I've seen a similar contract with Honeywell. Does this represent, do you know offhand if this is an increase? Or if it's about the same? It seems like.
There's, it looks like there's a slight increase from the last three, three years. Obviously, there is going to be an increase. Parts are a little more expensive, obviously, and harder to get here. But Honeywell, when we need it, they do respond in a timely manner and come and take care of the issues at hand.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Do we have a motion? Motion to approve contract T C C two thousand twenty four dash.
Motion by Commissioner Mascherini?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Vahill. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay, we'll continue with D. The other two, discussion, consideration, and decision regarding approval of forest management treatment services performed by Wood Sharks LLC utilizing state price agreement funding for this project. It's through the vice scundilo non-federal lands, N F L grant twenty four, twenty six dash twenty six to seventy seven, Elsa.
Chairman, Commission, before you is a, a copy of a brief scope of work, which actually shows the price of what it's going to cost to do this work in need through this N F L grant. Usually, we do an RFP, but lately now, the state price agreement out there, almost all our forested and people are on it. And at this time, we are asking to get approval using the state price agreement for the amount of two oh one, two fifty exclusive in New Mexico G R T. And the reasoning why I'm asking that is because G R T in New Mexico changes every six months. So I can't really say it honestly, it's going to be two hundred and sixty thousand. It changes again in January. So at this time, I'm asking to please have this approved for two hundred and thousand, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and one, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Wood Sharks using the state price agreement attached behind your packet.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of forest management treatment services performed by Wood Sharks LLC utilizing the state price agreement.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Brush to second. Second by Commissioner Mascherini. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And the F, discussion, consideration, decision regarding approval of contract T C C twenty dash, twenty twenty four dash thirty two. Wood Sharks LLC Red Cloud Ranch Project, N F L grant contractor will complete approximately seventy acres of forest standing under the vice scundilo, non-federal land grants on the, at the Red Cloud Ranch in Tandita. So yes, Elsa, you got this.
Again, Chairman, Commission, this goes hand in hand with the approval of the procurement on letter E. Letter F is the actual contract for Wood Sharks. And included with that contract obviously would be the scope of work that is brought about through our forester in that area in terms of what they are going to do within those seventy acres of forest standing out there in vice scundilo.
Okay, questions? No questions? I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Yeah, we move now to.
Thank you.
Move to Department Matters. A, discussion, consideration, decision regarding approval of job description for community school director. Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. At a prior commission meeting, the Commission did vote to approve the community schools department. We've had various presentations. There's been various other meetings with the commu, working community school group meeting. So this is, the next step is approving this job description. And then we'll be including this. And it's been included in our salary schedule with the final budget. And then the next step would be to approve a joint powers agreement. Our finance director has created the fund and budget. And we, if, we haven't yet, but we're in the process of transferring over the first fifty thousand dollars. The salary for this. But I would also like to thank the Human Resources Department for preparing the agenda. We have, have reviewed it several times. And I stand for any questions on the job description.
Questions for the manager? None? Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, before I make a motion, I just want to say thank you to our staff and team for, and to all of us for being part of this community-wide collaboration. We've got some partners in the room and partners throughout Taos County. And it's a pretty unique effort that is one of the first concrete things to come out of the one hundred percent community effort. So I just want to say thank you. And I would like to move approval of the job description for the community schools director.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brush, second by Commissioner Vahill to approve. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay, motion is passed. Move to the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any commission would like to discuss further? If not, is there a motion to approve? I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Romero. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Vahill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And we move right to item sixteen, County Manager Reports, Report Managers Reporting Matters. A, update the county commission on various items affecting Taos County. Mr. Hunter?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission. I'll be brief. When I began, as you may recall, when Ms. Stern came before the commission several meetings ago with members of Chelsea from the T C A and the kids that were working at T C A, I had mentioned that Ms. Stern had submitted a proposal to make a presentation at the International Economic Development Council. We're on a conference that's going to be held in Denver, Colorado. And they did accept Ms. Stern's proposal to do a presentation regarding the, the project of T C A. So she's hard at work on preparing for that presentation. So both me and Ms. Stern will be attending that conference. If anybody would still like to attend, we could still work and get the commission to be able to attend. There is a conflict for me and Ms. Stern on September seventeenth. It's the final day of the conference. I won't be here at the commission meeting. My finant emergency management, Mr. Lucero, is working on training for the key senior staff regarding the incident command system. So we are working to get everybody refreshed, refreshed, of course, for some. And for some, this will be new to the incident command system. So we're, we're doing that training now in September. So I look forward to that. If any, the commission wants to attend that, we'll be more than happy to accommodate the detention on dispatch. We are seeing folks that are clicking onto the services that Mr. Zara Costa mentioned. So we are getting those registries. That is going well. I don't have any analytics on that. I didn't have time to ask him for analytics on that. And then on our Friday, we had a very successful D W I alcohol awareness day. We had the, the job fair and the car show, which we did raise money for Community Against Violence. It was very well attended. I'd like to thank Renell Romero, Nisa Arabidi, Johnny Rodello, all the D W I staff and the human resources staff, Gina and Randy and Daniela. And we had Odd Dog's hamburgers out in the parking lot. There was several different, not providers that came and stood up. And they had a bounce house for the kids. So it was going good until the wind came. And the wind kind of shut it down on Friday afternoon. But it was going good as well. We previously, at the commission, they saved the date for the budget conference. I think one of you did respond that you'd like to attend the budget conference. The registration is now open for the budget conference. So if you would like to attend the budget conference at the end of, in mid, end of November, we can get you registered. Please let Renell.
I did let Renell know, did I? I'm kind of.
In November.
Do you know if she got it? Or do I, I'll just check with her because I did send her.
So. Hold on a sec. So the budget conference begins at noon on November twentieth, and it ends at noon on November twenty second. So if anybody would like to attend that, I know Chair Romero used to attend as Elvias back in the day, I remember some of it.
What conference?
The Department of, New Mexico Department of Finance Administration puts on a budget conference.
Where is that again?
It's going to be at the Albuquerque Marriott Hotel.
And the date is what again?
November twentieth through the twenty second. I'll afford the flyer now.
Yeah.
In November. Okay. So is the commissions aware? There will be a vote on the short-term rental ordinance on August twentieth. It's been published in the legal section of the Taos News. The, it's on our website. Ms. Arabidi did post it to Facebook as well on August twelfth at five thirty P M. to seven P M. Ms. Rachel Romero and Andy Jones and myself will be here to answer any questions the public may have regarding the short-term rental ordinance. We're also taking out an ad in the Taos News for that. And I'm going to have Andy do some, an infomercial for Facebook that we'll be recording in the next day or two. So, so that's in process. At the commission meeting of August twentieth, there will be a contract regarding the rewrite of the land use regulation. So the contractor that got selected through the RFP process because will be voting on their contract. So the next step forward and redoing the land use regulations. And then we, it was something I want to have a, and then very near future, a commission retreat regarding the changes to the land use regulation. So start thinking about that for that retreat. And then any final questions you may have regarding the short-term rental ordinance, I either refer you to Mr. Trujillo or Mr. Jones as well. On the August twentieth meeting, please start reviewing your notes or your PowerPoint that Mr. Silva gave you regarding the rate study from a new gen, a rate study regarding the salt waste and the recycling. So we're going to take that next step and narrow down what that rate structure is going to be like. So we'll be working with Mr. Trujillo on some changes to the ordinance. And so be prepared to start talking about that at August twentieth meeting as well. Last week, I did attend a training and S A F A that was put on by the Economic Development Department regarding federal opportunities, tax credits, and different tax incentives for working on zilliancy. And it was very informational. They haven't provided the PowerPoint yet, but I'll pass that on. As an example, if we bought fleet of E V trucks or even one E V truck, and if we apply for a credit, we can get a tax rebate back. So they're trying to incentivize doing things energy efficient and moving to electricity. So you just have to have an approved project. So we can't necessarily rush into anything, but there is the potential of eight billion dollars coming to New Mexico and tax credits and different tax incentives for school districts, for local governments, for nonprofits. The way I, my understanding, even a nonprofit like C A V could take advantage of. The way I, my understanding, using a nonprofit like CAV could take advantage of these tax credits. So trying to find us a person also to come and speak to the different nonprofits and school district. And so that is very informative and I was glad that I attended this opportunity. That's all I have for you. It's time for any questions.
Any questions for Manager Harman? I guess not. We'll move on to the.
I have one question. I'm sorry. Thank you. My apologies for some reason, I'm a little off here. But did you mention, Brad, the town and county retreat?
No, I did not. I didn't have that up my, I didn't have that down in my written notes to remind me. As you're aware, we did not have a joint meeting yesterday. Myself, the chair, Commissioner Behill, did briefly meet with Mayor Maestas and council member Fambro. Your interim manager also did join us in the meeting. As was discussed, as was supposed to be discussed in joint meetings, having a possible retreat out of, out of the area with town of Taos elected officials and key staff. There was a suggestion of, let me bring up the calendar, of September fifth and sixth, or September twelfth and thirteenth, to have a joint retreat out of Taos County. So it'd be somewhat of an overnight trip. Twelfth and thirteenth.
Let me check that.
And Mayor Maestas still has to take that back to his.
Yeah, twelfth and thirteenth, that will work.
To his council. Thank you for the reminder. I remember it before nine AM, but.
I think on one of those days is the, isn't it the the county, uh, county fair, I'm sorry, the state fair and the county? I'm not sure if we're participating. I'm just saying, I don't know if our key staff will be involved in that.
Uh, this, it's the thirteenth that Ms. Arabidi and Ms. Romero will be representing.
Okay, good. Good. So then we, yeah. Okay.
Conceivably, depending where it's at, we may be able to attend.
So do we have constances on the twelfth and thirteenth then?
Yeah, I think so.
Twelve and thirteen. Okay. Anything else on the manager's report? If not, the Veterans Cemetery update? Mr. Richard Sanchez?
Chair Romero, Commissioner, so always good to be here in front of you. Veterans Cemetery progress report. We are in the last stages of paint touch-up, programming lighting, doing our fire alarm checks before we do have our fire alarm testing. Building is functionally done. We've relocated some of our equipment there already, our excavator, our track hoe, our crypt lorry device and carriage. We need to purchase some office equipment that's listed by the Department of Veterans Affairs. Tools, miscellaneous tools. We'll be doing a final walkthrough on August twenty-first. We'll develop a punch list for our contractor. And then they'll have thirty days to correct any deficiencies that we or our architect sees. There are a couple of little sidewalks that will be replaced. Landscapers had to use a fairly large piece of equipment to plant some of the trees. And so we cracked some stones in the sidewalk, so those will be replaced. And they replaced a couple of trees that didn't make it through the winter. Grass is going good. The new landscaping looks good. Taos County, we have a little bit of additional detailing that I'd like to take, that we'll take care of outside the gates and whatnot. We need to put the letters up on the building that say Taos Veterans Cemetery. I said, touch-up painting, cleanup. I had a couple of pieces of glass that had scratches in them, so they'll be replacing them. They'll be on the punch list. Just small items like that. We're ready for the next phase.
So to do burials in, do we need to get staff onboard and trained?
Yes, so we do have the job descriptions complete. I don't think we brought them to the commission to approve. Ms. Finance Director has created the fund and budget for it. So the next step is to get the jobs posted. And then also I had outreach at the beginning in the summer to San Fe for the training. They wanted me to hold off on that. So when we're ready, I'm going to outreach again to San Fe to provide the training that we're going to need.
Do you, Chair, may I? Do you, Brad, have any idea what that timeline might look like? I know that's hard to nail down. I'm just wondering, because I know folks are wondering, when are we going to be able to bury?
I would love to make sure all the punch list is completed. As I mentioned to a few of you, we're waiting to hear back from Governor's Office on scheduling, the dedication, the formal opening. And so I think we should plan for immediately after that formal opening and then go from, go from.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the cemetery? Not, go ahead with the courthouse.
Well, I'd like to add one more item. Art in Public Places is a program the state has in place for legislative appropriations. We have purchased one painting artist that was in the catalog. You don't get to go out and just buy what you want. You have to shop from the state's catalog. We did have a local artist, Jonathan Warmday, coming. We purchased a painting from him for one of the offices. We've also purchased a sculpture. I'm going to go to San Fe to Moreto Madrid, actually, to look at it in the gallery and see what the requirement is going to be to place it. But we do have some pieces coming to the cemetery also.
See that one?
So I have one other question on the cemetery. Are you going to order a plaque?
I, I don't know. That's something that can come. It's Taos Veterans Cemetery.
Probably should.
If the commission wants to have us order a plaque or.
Inside the structure somewhere.
What would the plaque say? What does it, that you have on it?
Basically, what plaques usually say, completed such, such a time and possible names of the commissioners, county manager, project director. You can have all of that.
Mr. Chair, I would actually only be comfortable with that if it had commissioners' names going back from the very inception of the property. I'm with you.
And that's, and that's why I rose up too, because we could go all the way back to two thousand and seven.
Right.
And I know those county commissioners would probably want their, their names on there as well.
Good reason, yeah.
And I believe that was the first recorded vote, right, on two thousand and seven for the dedication of the property.
Right.
And so.
I agree.
We'd have to go that far back.
Okay, go ahead.
Chairman of Historic Courthouse?
Do it all, yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Historic Courthouse. Work is moving along slowly, tight space. Lots going on though. The elevator shaft is just about ready to top out. We had a meeting with the structural engineer in our bi-weekly, semi-weekly project meeting. We're changing, because of some conditions encountered in the old structure, we're changing from a new concrete bonding to structural steel bond beams that will help tie everything together a little bit better. That's a little change order that'll be coming down. It might be a little bit more, it might be a little bit less. But we had a structural engineer there. We did a real thorough inspection. We got some good ideas, feedback from the contractors on site, from my experience, from our architect. We think we have a good, a good path moving forward. We just have to run the loads and make sure the material's available and whatnot. But the elevator shaft is getting close to being topped out. And then the structural steel will go in that makes the openings in the first and second floor from the courthouse into the elevator lobby, along with the steel decking and stairs that go in the fire exit and whatnot. So that's slowly moving forward. We did get our paperwork, our grant agreement for the five point four million dollars from the state. And so we've already started discussions with the contractor and the architect. We'll be issuing a change order for, for a scope of work that will encompass that along with, since we have that funding, instead of doing a change order deleting scope in the existing contract, we'll add the scope of the structural repairs that we need to do to the roof now. We should have a quote real soon and, and we'll be presenting a fairly large change order for roof structure and re-roofing of the courthouse. But it's something that's in dire need. We're also going to have, we've had some additional wall damage because of the leak that's been in place where they tried patching it over the years. And it just, it's done some significant damage to, to the southeast corner of the adobe wall. And so we'll have to repair that as part of this project. Our track, we have electric transformer. We have three phases. We have our conduits in place. Carson has put in their primary wires. Our conduits are over to our electrical service. So once they construct the electrical service, after the masons are out of the way, we'll have three-phase power. We didn't interrupt power to any of the joining businesses, so that all went real well. They're finishing the backfill and compaction. And we'll do asphalt patching in the back, probably in the next couple of weeks with this money. And once we get the scope and the change order, a lot of things can start to happen inside the courthouse. But it's moving, it's moving well and not too many.
Question. Richard, how difficult could we possibly, you know? I was playing tourist this weekend and, and I noticed that as I was passing right in front of the historic courthouse, the windows are just draped, you know? And I'm wondering if we could possibly put pictures of what it's going to look like, you know, so people can actually stop and see what that final outcome. I'm just thinking that it would be nice to.
We could. We actually have some renderings that the, that the architectural.
Thank you, renderings, yes.
And we can get some of those blown up.
And put them in the windows? I mean, I'm just wondering, I don't know if anyone else.
Or we can use the paint over the plywood to make the plywood look a little bit, you know? Eventually, there'll be security gates that will close after hours. But we could paint the plywood and.
Because what I see people do is trying to look through the, the closed area. And if they had that picture, that view, that rendition, then they would.
No, we can do that. We can blow up some of those renditions of what it's going to look like in the front and in the back. And place them out there.
That would be great.
What about the roof?
The roof, well, the roof is going to have to get redone. But along with additional structure that was going to go in where the air conditioning units go, the exhaust fans for, for, for the bathrooms, the radon fan, all the mechanical that has to go on the roof that we have to correct. Where we've had the water damage on the south side of the, of the courthouse, we're going to have to do structure there too. So we've opened it up. Contractors have been working on. The roofing part is easy. It's this many square feet. They're putting this much insulation. That's new construction. But what we, when we take off the existing roof, nobody knows how bad the structure is. That's the question mark. And we know from what we've seen from this ceiling that's been damaged and we removed on the southeast corner, that the damage there is fairly extensive. We have rotten wood. We have adobes that are washed out. Bond beam has got a crack in it. So it's pretty substantial. Yeah, that has to be repaired.
Yeah.
It's kind of about logistics and getting it. It's about logistics of what you, what you do at what point in time?
Priority's going to be the roof because, and the roof and that wall, the northeast corner, because that is something that is structural to the, to the integrity of the building. So as soon as we get our fund and budget, like I said, we've started already working on the scope with the architect, the engineer, the contractor knows that we're going to focus there and then move into the bathrooms. So we have to see where the numbers come in for the estimated contract. The change order may actually have to be a cost plus change order. The way that works is you have a overhead cost that the contractor will give it to you. And, and then you agree to a fee anywhere from ten to twenty percent markup for their profit. That kind of protects the contractor. It also protects the client. If you ask for a set bid price change order, well, the contractor's going to say, they're going to say, well, I got to cover every expense that might happen. And so sometimes you get charged for a lot of things that aren't there and sometimes you don't. And so the fairest thing to get the best possible project done is to do a cost plus. You negotiate the fees and you negotiate the percentage of profit. And then if there's something, encounter something that needs more work, that continues. If it doesn't need as much work, well, you save because of the labor and your, and your price. But we'll see. Like I said, we've got it opened up. We're working on that. That's, right now, that's the most pressing issue is that southeast corner and the roof.
Okay, any other questions on the courthouse? If not, go ahead on general construction.
General constructions, let's start out with La Senegal Senior Center in Questa. We're waiting for a fund and budget there. Our contractor is ready to sign a new contract for Phase Two of La Senegal. And it's the paperwork, paperwork, paperwork. So we're almost there. The T-talks facility also on, we're waiting for fund and budget, but we are starting some of the work. We got the clearance on our environmental to start some of the fire suppression and freshening up of the existing building. So as soon as we get that and we get an updated cost proposal from another state, a different state contractor that has state contract, we'll be moving forward on that. And the design work, or the addition to spend the three million dollars that we have also. Pinasco, we received the preliminary site, preliminary building plans. We have our survey, topographical. And so they're just buttoning up numbers so that we can get, get a proposal and get a contract and get that moving forward also. Pondo asbestos has been removed. Demolition's started and we're moving forward on that. Detox for the other, I guess, the wellness facility, the one that used to be the old hotel. We've been working with the contractor to get us a cost proposal. We know the price is going to exceed what we have in the grant. The owner's willing to put in some additional funding. And so we're working on how to save them some money and everything. Bring that cost proposal to them within the next week or two. And if we can come to terms, if they have the funding to complete it or we have to change scope a little bit, we'll get that ironed out and that'll be moving forward. Yano Camado Community Center received a hundred thousand dollars. And speaking with the board from Yano Camado, they had already entered into the engineering with Alex Abeta for some, some additional parking. I confirmed that with them. So once we get our fund and budget and everything put together and they get their final design, we can put it out to bid. I don't know if that one will happen this year. It might have to wait till springtime. It's all dependent on temperature and when the design and everything comes through. El Prado Community Center also received a hundred thousand dollars. Pressing matters on El Prado are the roof and some structural issues. We did get, El Prado Community Board had engaged a local architect to give them an assessment. And that's probably who we'll use, since he's familiar already with the beginning of the project, to see if we can do some structure and try and get the roof at least patched or at least patched. Part of the problem with the roof is it's a torched-down modified bry roof. And it's over something else. By building code, you're only allowed to have two roofs on a structure. So once you have two roofs, if you need to re-roof, you have to do a tear-off. That increases your cost. That increases your cost by about 30%. On top of that, now we're gonna have to do asbestos and lead testing and remediation because the roof underneath it is probably almost 100 years old. It's kind of a cascading effect, especially on these older buildings, but the community is aware of it and we've had meetings with them and so they understand and they're gonna try and get more money and we'll just keep moving things forward.
Yeah.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
It's not.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
Why am I up here?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that the Commission open up the Tarleton request for a PUD one more time in order to clarify the, the findings for denial. If you let me explain why. From my understanding, what the, the basis for denial was basically incompatibility with the area, with the surrounding neighborhood and also the number of variances that were requested. I just wanna clarify that so that when we, when we draft the, the denial, that we have specifically two findings, that we break those out. The first one would be denial because the proposed request is inconsistent with the general character of the existing and surrounding zoning and does not provide a reasonable print transition between or buffer between uses. That is the, that's tied to the ordinance, specifically section 5.3.1. And I think that's consistent with, with what the motioner was, was stating, but clarifies the basis for it. And the second would be that the number of variances requested demonstrates the development's incompatibility with the surrounding neighborhood and community, which has to comply with all of those exceptions. And just, just, the proper word is exceptions, not variances, they're exceptions. So for that reason, I'd, I'd request that the Commission open up the Tarleton, which is, which agenda item is that? 12A. Yeah, so I respectfully request that you all open the Tarleton up again to clarify the basis for the denial.
Mr. Chair, I move that we reopen Agenda Item 12A regarding the Tarleton Eagle Village.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Brush to reopen. And second by Commissioner Mascheranes. Madam Clerk, please call her on, please.
Commissioner Romero.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranes?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I, as I discussed earlier, if the, if the motioner, which was Commissioner Behill, would agree to amend her motion with regard to the denial of the PUD and the Tarleton request, that motion would be, sorry, I'm sorry, was it Commissioner Brush? Commissioner Brush, forgive me. Commissioner Brush would agree to amend her motion to state to, that the motion is to deny the request based on two findings. First finding is the size of the development, I'm sorry, I'll have to read it specifically. Is that the proposed development is inconsistent with the general character of the existing and surrounding zoning and does not provide a reasonable transition or buffer between uses. That's finding one. Finding two would be the number of variances requested, variance, the number of exceptions, sorry, because they're not variants, the number of exceptions to the zoning code demonstrates the development's incompatibility with the surrounding neighborhood and community. If you agree, you could say, amend your motion.
Mr. Chair and Mr. Trujillo, I agree to amend my motion to deny based on the two findings as you just described, and I could do my best to repeat what you said, but.
I think that's okay.
Or can we just go with what you said?
I think we can go with what I said.
Thank you.
As long as, if there are any questions, that's fine.
And I will second that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Brush, second by Commissioner Behill. Is there further discussion? Not Madam Clerk, please call her on.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranes?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes.
Then I will make a motion because I'm gonna have to do the same right now.
No, you don't need to do it for, for the other, because the basis was the denial of the PUDs.
Okay, got it.
Thank you for, for doing that.
Thank you for the clarification, thank you. Okay, move on then. Next is 17 Commissioners Reports and Matters. A new business to be considered at a future commission meeting. I, I have one thing. There's been a request by the developers' owners at Willa, at the Willa Hotel, that the county do an ordinance regarding pace, what's called, been called pace financing so they can request loans, not from the county or not from the public sector, but from the private sector monies. And in order for them to do them, do that, the county would need to put an ordinance in place. And so maybe Commissioner or Manager, Houdamir, could, could give us more information, see where that's at, if that's being reviewed by, by the Development Director of Development, Economic Development.
Ms. Turner was not available today. She is looking into this matter. It is C-PACE funding, so Hotel Willa is looking to take out a loan and using the property tax is, is part of the, the loan. She will have a presentation on the August 20th meeting. So the, the county would have to pass an ordinance and the Towne-Touse would also have to pass a resolution since it's within the Towne-Touse boundaries, but Ms. Turner will have all the information at the next commission meeting.
Okay, thank you. And there are no more, no other new business to consider, Commissioner announcements. Anybody have any announcements? If not, how about Board Committee reports, New Mexico Counties.
Sorry, I do have an announcement and that is on Saturday, there is a, at the Axi Center, TCDC, a Touse Summit. I, I was actually looking for the flyer to read the, the details, but it starts at 10 and folks are invited to go out and there will be a barbecue, so, so please come on out. Okay? And then I'll move on to the New Mexico Counties Board Meeting and that was held in Clovis on Thursday and last week and I'll just give you the highlights. So it was the New Mexico Counties 2025 Legislative Priorities Meeting and so the Board came up with, has decided on these as their priorities. So number one is HB2 appropriations in regards to detention reimbursement fund, courthouse funding, detention recruitment fund, fire and emergency recruitment fund, EMS services and 700 MHC radios. Now, a lot of this has already been in the works in the past, so this is a continuation. And so they're going to be moving forward with that. The next one is the attorneys presented and was accepted by the Board, the Ipro improvement that will be going forward too. I'm not sure who will be carrying these bills, but New Mexico Counties will be backing these up. The third one is the assessors. They are asking for equitable disclosure on, on the non-residential commercial side as they are now unable to get that data. And so they're hoping to get some legislation that will allow, or rather require businesses to report when they buy or sell what, what they're paying so they can add it to their database. Commissioners have presented and it was agreed that humanitarian and law enforcement resources to address border-related crimes, title subject to change. And so those are the priorities of New Mexico Counties. Also, there were affiliate legislative initiatives that were endorsed by the Board and can move forward by the affiliate. So it just means that they're basically, the affiliations will move them on their own and New Mexico, New Mexico Counties will not in any way comment. They'll just let them do the, what they need to do. And so number one, assessors will be going forward with increased head of family exemptions deadline to apply for disabled veterans exemption. The attorneys, they're moving forward with statute, statute revision seven, county government obsolete laws, state should pay for county facilities occupied by state agencies, legal representation for counties disposal, disposal of property, personal property, the clerks' marriage license fee increase, along with proposed update to the, to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, statistical formula for post-election audits, commissioners, behavioral health treatment. They're talking about what that would look like and more funding for that. In regards to that, let's see, on the fire and EMS managers PR return to work, they're still working on some changes there. Fire and emergency managers, PRA, I'm sorry, I meant to go on to GIS. Amendment to the enhanced 911 Act, census, edge, district maps for public body on health services, work with OSI on updates to the healthcare consolidation oversight act. Treasures, they would like to see changes to installment agreements for delinquent property taxes, affiliate initiatives not supported by the Board, can be moved forward by individual respective county. And I, I wanna touch on that one because that would allow the treasures to be the folks doing the contracts on delinquent taxes versus property tax. And so funding or the, the monies come in a lot quicker. The property tax, the way it currently is done, they do contracts with folks that are delinquent and they hold on to that money for years and so we don't often see it for two, three years. This would allow the treasures, once again, to get that funding immediately. And treasures are wanting a creation of a special revenue fund for county treasures. So if you'd like to see the details of what that might look like and keeping in mind that first of all, here's the book, you can look at it, but it will change. You all know that once it gets in front of the legislators, whomever's going to, to support this or introduce it, it will, will change. But those are the things that we spoke about and that's what the, I'm sorry, the direction of the Board. And I'm having a hard day today. Didn't have enough coffee or too much coffee. Okay, so with that being said, that's just the update and we'll see more as changes are coming. So thank you. If you have any questions, if you wanna see the details of it, here they are.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other, anything else?
Just real quick on the North Central Regional Transit District. As you know, the facility here in Touse is well underway, it's moving forward. But on a couple of big notes, the, they started, electric vehicles have started coming in, so they're starting to come into the Espanola Jim West facility. Our last meeting, they had some there to show all the Board members. And also the, it was voted on by the Board, the Jim West remodel in addition to the building was gonna be done in phases and they, we've been able to acquire enough funding to be able to do everything at once, so it's no longer gonna be in phases, it's gonna be sent out for bid to the contractors to do everything at once. So I, I think that's a big thing that's gonna save the districts some money by doing it that way versus doing it in phases. So those are the things happening there.
Thank you. Any other reports? Not, can we move back to 18, 18B? Is that where we're at? This discussion regarding amendment to the County Manager's Contract, these matters may be discussed in executive session under Openshooting Act exemption, which loss for discussion of limited personnel matters. We're not finished yet. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session.
Motion by Commissioner McGeele. Second by Commissioner Brush. Madam Clerk, please call her on.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranes?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes, thank you. Motion to come back. Motion to come back in the executive, open session.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Brush, second by Commissioner Gugel Romano. Madam Clerk, please call her on.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranes?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Report from the attorney, Mr..
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good afternoon. Yeah, so my report is that only those matters that were referenced in the motion to go into closed session were discussed during closed session and no final decision was made.
Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. Is there a motion to accept the attorney's report? Motion by Commissioner, yeah, second by Commissioner McGeele. Madam Clerk, please call her on.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranes?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And we are now on item 18, 18, no, 19A, consideration, decision regarding amendment to the County Manager's Contract. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the amendment to our County Manager's Contract.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brush, second by Commissioner Gugel Romano. Discussion, not, Madam Clerk, please call her on.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Brush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascheranes?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay.
I was gonna say, do we have to, do we have to mention this? No.
Okay. We're at adjournment. I make a motion, we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mascheranes. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Nobody opposed. We are adjourned.
I love that. Maybe that. Name?